Okay, it's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. And customary, we always have a word of prayer before our meeting begins. And I've asked Commissioner Dorsey if he would lead us in this prayer at this time.
Let's pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America, the greatest country on planet Earth. We thank you for the many freedoms that we have as United States citizens, and we thank you for the many, many women, both past, present, and those in the future, who have fought for and will continue to defend our great country and the freedoms that we have here. We ask that you be with many, many women in law enforcement, emergency services, fire, EMS, and keep them safe and out of harms way. We ask that you provide traveling mercies to each and every one here tonight after the people's business is conducted, and we ask that you be with each and every one of us and deal with the issues that we may have, because we know that without you, we can't have our salvation. So it's in your precious heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call the Tuesday, September 26th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight. We welcome you. We welcome those that may be watching HTC Channel 3 or on our Hart County Board of Commissioners YouTube channel. I know we've had some problems with the YouTube channel, but maybe we've got it working tonight. I hope so. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion? Or is there any additions? Is Terrell not with us yet?
He lost Sam. I'm trying to get him back.
I don't know of anything that needed to be... Do y'all, any of y'all have anything that needed to be added? We'll move on here.
He probably would have brought it up earlier if he was on that thing.
Okay.
I'm making a motion for a presi...
Second. I've got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. And it's a five-o vote. Next on the agenda is approve the minutes from the September 12th, 2023, regular meeting. Now, I get a motion to approve.
They moved.
We got a motion by Commissioner Teasley. Have a second.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. Okay, now we'll go to the call meeting, 9/12/2023. That was a budget meeting, so if I saw a correct vote, we get a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion approved, 9/12 call meeting.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. All right. Remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. I don't think we have any tonight, so we'll go on to reports constitutional officers and department heads. Ms. Kim does not have anything, so we'll move on to county administrators' report.
I don't sound like she's got anything either.
And Terrell's, he's gone on my training classes and everything, so it looks like he's calling me now. Hello? Okay, that's fine. I got you on speakerphone, Terrell, so they'll hear you also.
I'm sorry.
Okay, you don't have any report. Okay, we'll move on to chairman's report. I do not really have anything to go at this time, so we'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman, other than I'd just like to thank all the people of Hart County for what they do every day to move our county forward. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
I want to echo what Commissioner Bennett, I appreciate all our county employees, our law enforcement, and first responders, EMS, and just appreciate everything all our county employees do to keep the county moving forward.
All right, we'll move on to District 4, Commissioner Brown.
I want to give my condolences and my thoughts and prayers to the family of Larry Hale. Larry was a, you know, great community member of Hart County for a long time. He left his impact here. I know he left his impact on me personally, and he'll be deeply missed, but just want to take the time to remember him and let everyone know that his family is in our thoughts and prayers. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move to District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I want to echo what you guys have all said as well for the Hale family, as Commissioner Brown mentioned. So we've got another bridge in process. We've got problems with trucks and everybody cutting through secondary roads again. I don't know, Bio Church Road and Nancy, that's Nancy Hart School Road, I think, Nancy Harper Community. I don't know what we can do, but I did have a gentleman who contacted me. I guess we're gonna have to ask, see if the Sheriff's Department can spend some time down there. But this is a safety issue. These trucks have no business cutting through, and I don't know, I don't know that GDOT's done a very good job of communicating this. And the last thing we want is to have millions of dollars of road damage like we've already got in the goldmine community. So we need to, me and Commissioner Bennett will get together and we'll try to get something going, since this kind of splits our districts.
I've been watching this. They're not doing much on Coldwater Creek Road simply because of being paved. I think they're using 368 out of Elberton on that one. But they bother me with Liberty Hill Church Road. I've seen a few go through there, and they're eating up Bio Church Road, like I said, Nancy Hart School Road. If we could get in touch with the Sheriff's Department and maybe get them to spend a little time down there and slow that down, it would be wonderful. It absolutely would be, because it's like I said, they're gonna destroy our roads, they are.
And just so everybody knows, just to follow up, we're resurf, widening and resurfacing Bio Church Road. We put that on hold. This bridge in the, around the Flat Rock Church area is completed. I'm gonna bring up a source of subject, because I think everybody needs to know. Hart State Park annexation. There's a council member who's going around soliciting everybody to contact us. Folks, it can't legally be done. It cannot legally be done. Refer to Code Section 36-36-20. There's no need to call us. There's a lot of people who don't want this done, but yet there's a certain council member who is out here advocating, telling people to call us. We did offer, back before we knew as much as we know about annexation now, the city an opportunity that we would not object to the annexation, which we've since learned, probably wasn't the smartest thing to do. But we offered them that we wouldn't object if they would not use the 60-40 law for a 25-year period and sign an intergovernmental agreement. And the same council member objected to that in a meeting in 2019, I believe it was. And then again, we came back and offered 15 years and same thing. But now that we know more than what we did at that time regarding annexation, it can't legally be done. So I think everybody here on the board shares that same sentiment, and I just want people to hear our side. We're not gonna get out here and bash this on social media or anything like that. We'll address it as a group, and I'm just bringing it up. I'm not speaking for the board, but I think everybody pretty much so feels the same way. We've been advised by our county attorney as well that there's no way this could happen. So that's all I got, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address that, because I felt like it needed to be done.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to 12 AO Business Fiscal Year 24 General Fund Budget Public Hearing. And what we'll do at this time, I'll need a motion to take us in a time of a public hearing and a second, and then we'll move into a public hearing as far as the budget goes. Can I get a motion to? Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, got a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dorsey. All in favor? Okay, five-o. So we're in a public hearing at this time concerning our budget. Are there any questions or concerns that you would like to bring before the board as far as the budget in fiscal year 24? Yes, sir? If you would, come to the front. And this has got to do with the budget?
Yeah, it do, perhaps.
All right.
I'd like to make a proposal, would you folks consider in budgeting a little money for what he's signing up right now, so we can try to save the roads and give the sheriff and local PD ways to issue tickets for the defender.
What kind of signage you speaking at?
Weight limits.
Weight limits.
Post a weight limit on the dang bridge. These state don't want to do it. How much does it cost?
They should already be there. We're required mandated by the state to have those posted. So those, those, those signs that should be...
But are they down everything like Bio Church and all?
Sir?
Are they posted like down the Bio Church and all?
There's no through truck signs in all these roads that we're talking about, excluding right now, there's not one on Coldwater Creek and/or either Flat Rock Road. We don't have those, but we've had three readings on them. They just haven't been put in place yet. That's all. But those are two roads right now not being used by these detour people. This, the other roads that we mentioned earlier that they've beaten to death.
At least not right today, they aren't using them.
Well, they don't, they can't right now, but it's possible.
The issue is GPS. They're not paying attention and following the state route detours. They're using GPS, and they're not, there's no intent to get around this. They're using GPS because they gotta go somewhere. They can't just stop.
I understand totally that angle, but if we had something posted up, GPS tells you, pal, why'd you go over that bridge? It's posted, and you know you're overweight. At least it gets an income. Get, get back with the cost, sign cost, much less the roads being damaged.
Well, and signage is important to a certain degree. I mean, when down 51, the DOT graciously come back and put truck route signs down at every intersection of a county road. And I don't think we've had that problem since they put those signs up. I mean, it keeps them coming down 51, which is a state highway, to get on 29 to go to Perona. That has been very effective. That has worked. So there are some advantages to signs, but we just can't go out and put just any kind of signs up that we like, but, and that's state right away, too, so we gotta be careful.
Because DOT probably won't do nothing until after.
Yeah.
Wait till after the road construction. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you. Any, any discussion as far as our concerns, as far as our budget?
I do want to bring up something. I've mentioned to some of you guys. Archway. We recently signed a renewal contract that goes through June 30th of next year. I don't feel like we're getting our money's worth with Archway, and I know there's project lists out there that aren't getting anywhere. Mr. Chairman, you and myself and Councilman Mike McNabb met up at the courthouse and looked at the parking up there, and it's one of the things we asked them to look at. I don't know that we've seen any results back. I know there were some issues with some of the utilities there. I know Terrell's got some projects that he's wanting to see done from the GL standpoint, and there may be one or two other things. But my point here is, we're paying for service. Let's make sure that we get the taxpayers' money's worth. I'm not throwing it under the bus, I just want to put it out there that I don't feel like we've gotten our money's worth in the last couple of years.
Was it 12,000? Is that where it was?
12,000.
But I would like, they, they did come back with a plan as far as the parking around the square, but...
It was tied in some other things, too.
Right. We went up there to talk about the square, and then Depot Street got involved and all these other streets, so we wanted to limit, if we can get it done, maybe again, and limit it to around the square, maybe we could go forward with that project.
We're, we're an equal funding partner, and some of the other funding agencies are getting a whole lot more than we are.
One day that, then we renewed that in May, was it May?
It runs to June 30th.
I mean...
And this gives an opportunity for them to fix it. I just want, that's why I'm saying something now.
And maybe we as a board should start including this at least once a month on our agenda, where we getting updates and discussing openly about projects that we want to see.
That would probably be a good idea.
You know, keeping our thumb on it a little bit better. And it's just like anything else. If it's not on the agenda and it gets pushed aside, we cover so many different things. If we consist to stay on top of it, maybe we'll see some better results, what we're looking for.
Have we given them anything to act on lately?
We, they did some work at Milltown.
That was two years ago.
Yeah, that's a while back when they done that.
Well, I mean, the parking was later than that. That was the last thing we done.
Yeah.
Would you guys want me to put that in a form of motion that once a month, not every meeting, but maybe once a month, we have that on the agenda?
Just quarters, fine, for them, sir.
Quarter.
Just have Terrell reach out to her.
Well, I'll make a motion that going forward, once a quarter, every three months, right? Four months?
Every three months.
I just like them to, every three months.
Because we're already kind of past the quarter system.
I'll give you a second, Mr. Brown.
That we get an update on Archway and discuss that on the agenda.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown for a report from Archway every quarter or every three months.
And I guess, you know, it could be just a report from, and Terrell's the one going to the meetings, correct?
No.
I don't know if necessarily you need to ask him to be at every meeting, but that's completely up to you guys. You would like for Rosanna or Bill or whoever.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. All right, now we get, as far as the budget, anyone else have any questions or concerns? If not, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Mr. Teasley. We'll call for a vote, all in favor to close it, and it's a five-o vote. All right. Next, fiscal year 2024 general fund budget adoption. You have a for you there?
I'll make a motion we adopt the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget, general fund budget of $15,851,259.
Give me a second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote to adopt the year 24 fiscal year budget. All right, text, year 23 loss rollback resolution.
I'll make a motion, we approve the 2023 loss rollback resolution, which changes our millage rate from 7.177, taking a rollback for lost, which is a local option sales tax. It's a one penny sales tax that accounts for 2.714 meals, and that brings our total millage rate to 4.463 meals.
Give me a second.
Give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to adopt the rollback resolution. We got a second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. All right, now it's, we'll move back to the rollback millage rate adoption, and that's basically what we were doing with the lost tax, and you got a lost rollback of 2.714, and that's at 1% sales tax. If we did not have that, we would not be able to do this 2.7 meals off of your millage, and so we'd be at a 7.17, seven meals. So that was voted in years ago, and that was voted to be used for rollback on your property taxes, so with that, and then the, just as previous motion, your total, total millage rate would be 4.463 meals. Do we have a motion to adopt the rollback millage rate?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. All right, now we'll move on to Recreation School System Facility Use Agreement. Ms. Kim, would you like to speak on?
Yes, we've never had an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education. I'm sure y'all know that we utilize each other's fields and do so very frequently. The Board of Education had initially proposed that we sign their contract like any other person who was renting their fields, and that really wasn't applicable to us, so we reached out to their council, who got us an intergovernmental agreement. It came in at last minute, right before the last meeting, and I got here and didn't like it. And so we backed up and changed a few things, and the only thing left that I think just is gonna cause a little bit of heartburn, it's got a cost to clean up for each use, us to clean up their facilities and them to clean up ours, and we've had a little bit of history of getting to their facilities, and their facilities are already partially, I don't say dirty, but the trash cans partially full and things like that. Our other concern in talking with Mr. Owen was getting into the actual stadium with a vehicle to take off the trash from the trash cans, taken that our access is just by pedestrian gate, and so I'm gonna leave whether or not y'all are ready to move forward with this contract up to you guys tonight. We may need to have a little further conversation with him. Jim, did you need to add anything else to that? So those are his concerns. Our fields look really good. We're mandated to use that stadium, and Jim has already gone ahead and made some contact trying to see if we can't get exempt from that mandate, because our fields are stellar.
Jim, who mandates that again, that we can't use our fields?
Football.
The Association of the Long Horses.
Yeah. That's the one that they, because they have to travel to different counties. Do any counties still just do football within their county?
Uh, yeah.
And what was the reason behind? Did they give anything specific of what, what the problem was with our fields?
The school system actually suggested that.
It's just they wanted to be in the high school fields. The kids, that's, they're gonna be their future playing field, and they wanted to encourage that at a younger age. Philosophy of that, the league that we're in, that's the philosophy.
So we're a little short on cleanup personnel. You know, by Friday, the staff's hit their 40-hour marks, and this would be Saturday and or Sunday from that, right? So it's gonna cause a little bit of a problem. We've always cleaned up behind them and them behind us, and...
I'd just go back to them and say, just ask them to take that out.
Said it was not negotiable.
And if they say it's non-negotiable, all these school bus turnarounds that we're out here doing and things like that, we don't charge them a penny for. I mean, there's a lot of other things. It's, it's all taxpayers' money. I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a problem.
I think the statement to me was to clean up the stadium after we utilized it was something like $300, $350, and as well as the gym. That cost a considerable expense, they felt, and...
And we're not cleaning up anything?
Gymnasiums, when we use the gyms...
I thought you cleaned it.
We actually hire somebody to do that as a gym supervisor, and that is part of their duties, is to keep the facility clean. If we've ever had anything that was not, it was addressed the very next day.
Okay, well, it sounds like that we're maybe not comfortable with it as it is. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, let's just see if we can go back, I'm with Commissioner Dorsey, let's see if we can get the cleanup out and then go from there, because we can always agree to it next meeting.
Make a motion to take no action on this issue.
I think Mr. Owen is comfortable with it.
He'll work with it.
Okay.
He's willing to work.
I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I'll put in one last comment, that, you know, it's our understanding that it's clean when we get there.
Okay.
Well, I had, before, let's make sure it's...
Because what's gonna be the...
What's gonna happen is finalized here before we agree to sign something.
Because what you're saying you're good with, I mean, is that gonna, this gonna come at a cost, just some form of fashion?
It'll be me cleaning it up.
Yeah, but if it, for some reason, you know, that doesn't happen, we would have to hire it out, correct?
People want that.
Well, I still want to...
I'll be there.
I appreciate it, Jim, but I...
It takes to make it right, but...
Well, this is not the first time we've played football on the weekend. How did we do it before?
We didn't.
It wasn't.
They took care of it.
Wasn't a problem before.
Well, it has not been a problem.
You said...
I talked about prior to using the high school fields, we played at our own fields. We cleaned those fields up on the weekend. It's my point.
No, we did it on Monday morning.
They did have paralese from...
Yeah, we did have that, but that was, they would help out when we had them on Monday morning when they were able to come out.
Baseball tournaments that happened through the weekend, we clean up during the tournaments.
We, Little League helps with that.
Yeah. But I'm just, all right, what's, we should, I mean, it's, it's...
We got a motion to...
I just made a motion to take no action over this time, that's all.
Well, let's, I would give you a second on that, and then, like I said, we can always come back to it, or we'll come back to it next, next meeting. Let's see if we can't figure out something first. This is my, my opinion, let's see if we can't figure out something first on the cleanup. It's never been there before, at least discussing why it's been there.
I mean, there are six years, and this is the first time we've ever been through it.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's a taxpayer's money regardless of which way it comes from.
That's right.
But I don't see why they should be charging us for all the things we do for, for the school system, for our county road department and all the things that we do. It's a lot more than the cost associated with just having to clean up after, what, four, four games, five?
You got games scheduled before our next meeting?
Um, yes, I did.
So this does not have to be done before those games, or we're gonna get kicked out of the park?
We'll take care of whatever needs done.
Just, just not signed, so you're not obligating yourself to it.
Huh?
As long as it's not signed, we're not obligated to it.
What I'm getting at is they're gonna let us use the fields. I mean, that's what I want to make sure of.
If that ever came to, we have a backup.
Okay.
So we're, we're okay with whatever it takes to, to make everybody happy, that's what I would do.
So we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett not taking any action, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion?
I thought we were going to, I'd like to say let's try to get this resolved, so we gotta do something to get it resolved, to do nothing, nothing happens.
Well, you know, they've always done that.
Take no action, so they can work it.
Because you're gonna go back, talk with the council.
But the action ought to be to have Kim go back to work with, with school board's council.
Right.
And then come back to us, but the motion was made to do nothing. That's, that's two different...
To take no action tonight was the motion.
Right. The action needs to be taken is to have the attorney go back and work with school board's attorney to try to get this resolved.
Well, that's what she said. She said she needed to meet with them again.
I understand, but the motion wasn't that.
No.
Okay.
If you'd like for me to amend that motion?
I think we should.
I'll amend my motion to, for the county attorney, Kim, to go back to and renegotiate this, to take out that part, hopefully the cleaning up behind.
Okay.
I'll give you another second.
Means your second, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, we'll call for a vote, and it's five-o vote. Okay, we'll move on to Chapter 46, Land Development Standards amended and take it as a first reading.
I still got one hiccup here. I'm making some copies to hand you guys, and I guess I'm, I got one of you, too, Mr. ...
Thank you.
All right, bye. Couple of things. I'm still looking at my, or I should say, first, and I'm advocating for the people of Hart County, all the construction workers, more or less, which is a very large percentage of the people in Hart County, as well as our smaller developers here in Hart County. So I'm recommend, I'll go ahead and read it. I am making a proposal for a Level 6 subdivision with all the Level 2 requirements excluding maximum of 10 lots, no curb and gutter, but an engineered site plan for all soil erosion with natural runoffs. Performance bond on the road only. I'm still looking at the 1,000-foot buffer. I don't see a problem with it, because if you got a house on the left and a house on the right, 15 acres in the middle, you're not encroaching on anybody. the right, 15 acres in the middle, you're not encroaching on anybody. And optional to tie in the county water, which that would give them the option to have community water, community water systems or private systems. And that would be the only changes I would have from a level two subdivisions. And with all that being said, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, chapter 46 adopt this as a level six subdivision.
We have five other levels. I was thinking it was...
The level two...
Your exemptions, I mean, we didn't put those in there as a level, did we?
We have level three.
We're at level three, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I'm way in here just a little bit. And I spent some time looking at our comprehensive plan. People have made it very clear, they don't want these large housing developments in this county. I mean, you guys have seen it, it's there. I actually spoke to a developer today and bounced an idea off, and it's similar to what Commissioner Bennett was doing here, but, um, my thoughts are that we call it a neighborhood, not a subdivision, and, and make it smaller. But I do think that...
Excuse me?
I do think you're gonna have to have a performance bond on all the infrastructure, and I think you gotta do water. It's not fair for one developer to have to do water and others not.
Well, he gets to pick his choice whether he wants to do a neighborhood, community subdivision or, or the level two.
You're talking about the water system.
Well, I understand, but I, I just, I don't feel good about telling somebody, say, hey, you got, if you wanna move down here now, you got to spend this much money to do it on our water system. I think if you own the property, state law says you can have a well on one acre, and that's, that's just a state law, and I don't think we should try to make people try to get outside of that. And, like I said, they can have community wells or a private well. They got three different options there. Uh, I just feel like we're holding a gun to them, and that's exactly what we're doing when we say you got to tie in our water if you're gonna build down here. And I don't, I'm not gonna hold a gun to the property owner, because I'm one myself, and I don't want nobody telling me what I got to do with it.
Who makes the profit off a development?
Well, in some cases, the developer, in some cases, the builder, in some cases, none. It just depends on how good they are.
My point here is, your current subdivision ordinance requires this. It's been that way for probably 15 years or longer. So, why do we wanna change it now? You got people who come in here and go to water authority meetings and beg to get county water run to them. Um, I don't know that it's the taxpayers', I don't feel like it's the taxpayer's responsibility to do that when somebody's already made their profits and they left. Um, I, I can't support that. Um, yeah, it, they do have options, um, but with this pending lot size change, that's gonna complicate things a little bit more that the Board of Health is looking at. But I just don't feel like it's right to go and take that away now when there's subdivisions out there that have had to do this, and now all of a sudden we're gonna stop.
Well, I go back to what I said at the beginning of the beginning. This is for our local people. The people that live here are local developers and our construction workers, and I'm gonna say that our construction workers are 30% of this county. That's a, that's a lot of people.
But we can't treat people differently. I don't know.
It's not treating people any differently. If you're treating people differently, you can remind yourself of the lake, because, uh, this thing totally treats the lake differently when you go to one acre lot versus the half acre they was getting. Uh, so, I mean, you know, we don't, we don't cross that line a couple of times doing different things. Uh, this, this is for the people right here, our local people. That's what it's for, and that's the reason I've drawn it out the way I drew it. I don't think no large developer's gonna jump all over it whatsoever. I don't think they're gonna jump on a level two, period, nobody. But, uh, but the large developer's not even gonna get on this one. He can't come down here and build 10 houses and make no money at it, is what it amounts to. And I'm already seeing all of our locals working out of town already, so, not all of them, but a lot. This is for the people. It does not, don't have anything to do with me whatsoever or nothing else.
Well, and on the curb and gutter, I get it. I mean, it does, uh, tremendous. We got statistics sent to us, um, from the guys who've been here for pretty much every meeting. You know, for me, I guess the reason why I'm so adamant on the roads is I see a lot on my end where there's existing subdivisions that we've, we've had to take in the road, and we've had to go in and fix them from erosion issues. So, I'm not necessarily against, you know, taking them out, but it's just, my, my thing is, okay, they have the upfront costs, but we have it forever as far as the county, and, I mean, that money's infinite if you look at it that way, of us maintaining those roads, fixing, you know? I mean, we got one up in my district. I forget how much concrete we had to, uh, put up under the road bed and then not, not on top of it with a rock, um, and, uh, psych work just to keep it from falling in. That's what I want.
Well, I understand, but I didn't ask to change anything on roads. That's still DOT specs with a performance bond.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not asked to change roads, because it's all about, I mean, then you're right back to costing the taxpayer money, you know, with shoddy roads. We're not gonna have shoddy roads.
So, it's still maintaining DOT specs, just, you're just taking the concrete out?
Everything, level two, just like level two excluding what you're looking at in front of it.
Now, I'm gonna play devil's advocate again, um, because you mentioned it before a couple of meetings ago, and my, uh, point I brought up was, how is this not gonna create a loophole for someone to section off a track, do 10, come back, section off another track, do 10, and then...
That's where your thousand-foot buffer comes in. A thousand-foot buffer would create, if you weren't, if you didn't find that piece of property between two local properties, then you're gonna have to buy 40 acres to build 10 houses. If you wanna build 20 houses, you're gonna have to buy somewhere around 78 acres to build 20 houses. Nobody's buying 78 acres of land in county to build 20 houses, because you're talking about a million dollars worth of land to begin with. There's no way you could sell that property or whatever. So, I don't, that don't come into play at all with this thousand-foot. The thousand-foot buffer, foots, 10 acres on each side and 10 acres in the back, that's as close as you can get to it. So, now, you got to have 40 acres out, unless you can find that perfect 15 acres out there to go buy them between two properties. And no farmer's gonna sell you 15 acres in the middle of his big field to start with, so...
But what if somebody else wants to go and do one, and with this buffer that you've got, that they can't have enough room to do the buffer? You're penalizing another person.
Another builder?
A developer?
No, he just had to look somewhere else. I mean, the one that found it first, I guess, it's like...
Why couldn't you build up next to, because you already got a thousand-foot buffer?
If you say if you didn't have a number four.
But the way this is written, each one's gonna have to have a thousand-foot buffer.
That's right.
That's the way it's written.
So, technically, we'd have to do that one.
It wouldn't be fair.
Well, it don't say each one. It just says a thousand-foot buffer.
The way he, the way he's explained it, it would be penalizing somebody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
Well, there's a lot of things that we do penalize as others. Each one of us do it all the time. Anybody that breathes air, God's air, penalizes others about some of the things they do. This is just, like I said, I'm advocating here for the people of Hart County, developers, construction workers, and our locals.
All right. Can I make some suggestions tonight, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
We just have received this. Can we, can we take this in and go on with our meeting and maybe take the first reading or not, whatever we do tonight, and then bring this back up at the next?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right. Was there anything else in the, is there a reason that we, Kim did make some adjustments to, um...
Well, I got two. I, I've got one question. It was a, uh, I guess a new draft in my mailbox, and then there was a new one landing on it, and one of them's thicker than the other, so which one do we use?
It should be the same.
There was one printed out tonight that was placed...
It says 9/26/23 in the top corner.
Yes, or no?
That's, uh, 1/55, 1/8, 1/55, 1/1055.
Which one did that one?
But if you feel...
We got two. We had two on our desk.
Okay.
This has got, that's got some stuff behind it.
Okay. This is the one that Terrell had printed out this morning.
The staple.
With the staples.
Okay.
Those papers you stick in.
Paper picker, okay.
Maybe front and back. Is that front and back?
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay. That's one.
I'm sorry, saving paper, front and back.
Make sure it was on the right page, what did they say?
One's front and back, one's, one's side.
So, all I, all I did with that was went in and cleaned up where we'd made the previous edits, and, um, I had added a provision for a site plan, but on reading the requirements for the plat, it really is a site plan, so I took, uh, the site plan back out. So, those are the only, uh, changes. Pat Goran had two regarding the water system. One of those, uh, being that a licensed contractor install it, and the other being that it be approved by the proper governmental authority, be that us or the city or whoever's gonna take it on, um, while it's still open.
Well, I agree with the licensed contractor installing. Good luck to you.
So, if we're gonna hook to it, it just needed to meet our specs in general, be it two-inch pipe, hydrant plant, that type thing.
All right.
I did leave the curb and gutter the way it was, and I sent you all a proposal outside a curb and gutter, um, for drainage, as y'all had discussed last time, too. So, you've got both of those options to look at, and maybe the non-curb and gutter, if y'all are looking at Mr. Bennett's, could be incorporated into his version instead of the overall land development standard, whatever y'all wanted to do.
Well, I was good at max 10 lots that would be exempt from the curb and gutter and thing. I mean, I was, um, I was good with that, and...
And we can call it anything, a neighborhood, a micro, or a level, whatever, it don't matter what the name, what the name.
And just so y'all know, I've been hit twice since the last meeting by developers or realtors, and, um, kindly, but their comments were still concerned about the three acres. So, if y'all kinda want to explain to them why we're looking at three acres on a county road, I mean, I've explained curb cuts and that you put your interior roads and...
Let's go look at Mount Hiva.
That's public safety, a walnut drive.
Yeah, but that's the result of not having that one. They wanna know what's the advantage of doing that, I guess.
It's the management growth and public safety. I mean, you don't have school buses stopping every 75 feet.
Oh, yeah, I get, I get it, but, I mean, there's people that don't understand that part of it, really.
If they go up there and look and watch what goes on when a school bus goes through there, you'll see.
I can't find the section, but I read it a couple nights ago, it's, um, where the developer has to publicly advertise a subdivision.
It's on page...
That was in the beginning.
Four or five.
Yeah, that's not something that we added.
So, is that mandatory?
It's right before level two subdivision.
I guess we did.
I don't, do, do we, is that really necessary? I mean, the guys, I'm thinking...
It was just a way of letting the neighborhood know what was fixing to happen. I thought it was...
I'm just saying, we might could fill this room up, because somebody's got something to say about anything. I don't care what you do. Somebody's got something to say about it. I just, I didn't feel that like it was really necessary, to be honest, what I was reading.
Well, I mean, that's just, that was only intended, um...
Yeah.
It was transparency, so people know what's going on.
What's going on. All right. Do we want to take this as first reading tonight?
Wouldn't the sign, uh, wouldn't a Home Depot box, you know, work box, did the same thing?
No, this would be something where we got a legal description and let everybody know what's going on.
You have to do it like when you're doing beer wine lines.
Doing an annexation or something like that, they have to sign it, that way people know.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking we're gonna get a lot of rebuttal in here from it, when you throw a sign up. If, and if they approve it, the land's approved, their site plan all is approved, then you're just more or less wasting somebody's time and money sticking a sign up here, because it's gonna go through anyway. Uh, that was my thoughts. Well, I'd say, I, I'll make a motion to, as a first reading with a discussion of the...
There's already a motion on the floor on this.
Do what?
There's already, your motion's already on the floor from a while ago.
I thought it died.
Well, you never did get a second, did you?
No.
All right, continue if you want.
I'd say, I'd make a motion to take this as first reading on chapter 46.
Okay.
Land development standards, I'm sorry.
We got a second?
Second?
Second back to Mr. Teasley. Any discussion, any wanting, public got a view on this or want to say anything? Like I said, this is not a completed document at this point, uh, but we are trying to get there.
And it's going forward, that's what we're doing.
And if, uh, if you've got a question or would like to speak to any of the commissioners during the week or weekend or whatever and wanted to talk about this, and if you don't understand level three, we'll try our best to explain it to you, uh, or any other of the levels, but, um, we need to move on on this and try to get this thing done.
One thing I would propose is in the cul-de-sac, we talked about a 60-foot frontage in talking with some folks. They would like to, we were at 30-foot, and I explained the reason behind why we went to a wider, um, frontage, but they proposed 40-foot. They said that the math would work out and that it would because of 360-degree circle. So, I would think that that would be worthy of looking into. It's under level two subdivision, that's the only one that's shown there.
You wanna, uh, I mean, your motion do include that, uh...
We can do it next time, whatever, doesn't matter. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out. That's a change I'd like to see made.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call...
I didn't, I didn't want you to stand up.
They want everybody with a camera.
Oh, hey, yes. What's your name, please?
It's obvious.
What's your name?
Stan Lester.
And you live in Hart County?
Absolutely. Kinda getting involved in the community, been on the road for 40 years, glad to be a part of things for a change. It's, uh, like to kill me in the process. But anyway, Hart County's obviously going through a tremendous growing process. We all know that. Why don't you have a meeting with the realtors, with the contractors, and sit down and do this one time and be done with it? Because we're all bouncing back and forth here. Everybody's kinda, you know, I mean, you can see there's a little tension, but just sit down and come up with a plan, and this is the plan. If you wanna build here, this is what's required, period, because it's only gonna get worse from here on out.
One of the things that you left out about the meeting is our constituents and the taxpayers of Hart County. We've had this room packed, standing room only, wanting changes like what we've put together.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
Well, and what I mean by that is go to them, find out what's suitable. You know what's already on the books.
That's where this comes from.
And then come back, you know, to constituents.
We've been listening to them. We started two years ago.
Okay.
And, yes, we've had called meetings after called meeting after called meeting.
For discussions.
And everyone was welcome. It was an open forum meeting.
Right.
And they put in their suggestions. Some of them we'd listened to, some of them we didn't listen to. I mean, it was just, uh, but, uh, this is where we're at, at this point.
Okay.
You know? Well, it just sounds like you're kinda stuck. Yeah, no.
This, this is a curveball that was thrown at us through the last minute, and it's something, and I do think there's some merit to some of the things he proposed.
Okay.
And not finish this off.
Well, that's good, 'cause it's just a suggestion from me, 'cause the growth is gonna just, I mean, it's gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better.
We're gonna grow, we're just kinda mad.
That's why we've increased lot sizes on existing county roads and things of that nature, some why we've put levels of subdivisions out here as far as acre si, uh, lot sizes, that kinda thing. We've tried to be very definitive and make it clear. You know, we've had, we had a person who was here and sent an email about how great things are in other counties. Go to Franklin County and talk to some of the commissioners about what they got going on over there.
Yeah, I used to live there. I know. Well, we do appreciate your comments. Absolutely. You know, and it's, and it's just looking for the benefit of the county. Right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. Take this as a first reading, all in favor? All right, it's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on down to new business. John Webb requested variance. He does not have a hundred-foot road frontage on his property. I think it's around eighty-something feet, I think, but, uh, he's asking for variance.
Right. I've just purchased an acre and a half on seventy-seven spur. There's no other road frontage available for me to purchase. It's been an existing culvert and a driveway going into that property for over twenty years. 'Cause I feel like kinda grandfather me in. And the nearest driveway is about ninety feet from where my driveway is.
Okay, let me make a correction.
Like I say, I'm just requesting a variance to be able to have access to my property.
Okay, let me make a correction. What'd you say, Terrell?
Sixty-four, forty-five.
Sixty-four, okay. Sixty-four feet of road front is what Terrell's got recorded.
You're just short of sixty-five, that's what I saw on your plat as well. You're asking for about thirty-five feet, is what you're asking.
I appreciate you considering, gentlemen, and appreciate allowing me to have access to property.
And there is an existing road in culvert out there, so that's what I'm curious of. Was this already approved for a driveway, you know, years ago? And it's already out there, county's got a culvert and a, and a driveway, where he's putting this driveway at?
This, this was subdivided off of a six-acre track, was it not, initially?
It would not, I mean, like I said, the nearest driveway is about ninety feet away. The other direction is over a hundred feet and a half mile from another driveway, so it wouldn't cause any, any traffic problem. I mean, I'm seventy-five, I won't be going in and out fifty times a day, maybe two or three times a week.
Well, in the, on that section of the road, it is very straight.
No, there's nothing else on that section.
I mean, it's, you're a ways away from the curve.
Right.
This, this brings back the problem of an ordinance that we're getting ready to adopt. I would, so my understanding is that this was cut off, this was a subdivided piece of property.
It was.
Okay. If it were a pre-plated, pre-existing lot that was already platted like this, this board could give you, you know, we could approve it and grandfather it. But this contradicts with our new ordinance, guys. And I wanna help, but the problem we got is we're gonna say a hundred-foot of road frontage when we're subdividing.
Can I not have access to my property then?
Well, I don't disagree with you, I'm trying to help you.
I understand.
But the problem is, we got an ordinance that we've sit here and worked on for two years, and now this is, this is one of those things that we've got to deal with.
Are you related, related to any of those?
No, I'm not.
Have you asked them to buy, have you asked any of the neighbors if they'd sell you thirty-five feet?
I haven't talked to them fifty times.
Could you do that and come back to us? That way we at least exhaust the options that are out there before we go and grant a variance. And I hate to be difficult, but I'm just trying to make sure that, that people need to know this going forward, this is what the ordinance is.
Well, there's a situation here, I think, Commissioner, that everything's already, I mean, there's not a lot, a lot of new growth coming into that area. Everything's already built out for the most part.
Who knows?
But...
I think on each side of him, I mean...
I believe he can get close to a three-hundred-foot distance from the last driveway, and the intent of this was to...
There's no doubt.
...cutting driveways on top of each other. And it, and this would not do that, I don't think.
And which that land or any of them, I don't think somebody developed anyway, what I'm understanding.
Ain't nothing going on right there. If you're, if you're going towards Lavonia Pass to where his driveway would be, I don't think that you can go in there just because of the gully. It drops off pretty quick right there.
But you can still develop that, though.
You'd have to have a long driveway, and you wouldn't be able to put multiple, I mean...
This is up there next to the horizon.
In my personal opinion, yes, this goes against the one-hundred-foot, but it's a special situation here on how it lays one, I mean, I've, I drive this road pretty much every day, so, um, and I've went up here several times to look at it. And there's, uh, there's plenty of visibility, and in my opinion, there's not a big threat on either side of multiple houses coming in and creating a, you know, driveway, driveway. And I don't even know if there's enough acreage on either side to be able to, to, to subdivide off the existing landowner, if that makes sense, to, to, to do what you're doing. I don't think the guy on the left or right would be able to do what you're doing.
I don't think he'd want, no.
One on the left probably is in a consultation contract.
Now, what, you're, you're building a house here?
I'm playing, hoping to, if, you know, if I can get access to it.
Okay. And where do you live at now?
I'm living in the Overcount at the present time.
Okay.
Nobody's pulling up on Q Public.
And you're just looking to come and retire here?
Yes, retire.
Be closer to family, or?
I'm single, I'll be living alone. That's why I say if they bear it two or three times a week in and out of the driveway, so they bear, bear a little traffic there.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance based off of the uniqueness of this, uh, of this lot and how it lays in between two property owners. I just don't see there being a public safety issue here. I do understand the hundred-foot issue and, um, and what that entails, but being the, how this, this lot lays in a special circumstance, that's why I'm making a motion to approve variance.
Okay, you got a motion back from Mr. Brown, have a second?
Second.
A second back from Mr. Teasley. Any other discussion?
I'm just looking at what's on Q Public. To the left, back toward Mount Albat Road, is a wooded track. I just think that before we grant a variance, we need to see if we couldn't pick up a few feet here or there. That's just my thing.
That's the last double-wide back to my left.
Here's his property, right here, right here.
Problem is, I don't, I don't know.
Let's at least get, get the ask, that way we can put it to bed, and then we can say when we grant a variance that he's exhausted all of his options, and then we can do it. That's all I would ask.
I get what you're saying there, so... You mind asking him?
Well, I don't know him, I'll have to try to contact him, I don't know when he even lives there, and I've got my home, present home on...
Well, let's just keep that...
I don't know what market to sell, and I'm gonna need to move, you know...
I know, I know one of these folks, I don't have a problem asking him.
'Cause we can do, till next meeting, let's just, what, uh, first and over...
Two weeks.
So get the ask, get the clear yay or nay, and at least we have that on record, that you did exhaust that option. If the options are exhausted, we don't, we're not set at the present.
Exactly.
Is what we're getting at. So I guess I will need to amend my motion.
I don't think anybody's saying they won't do it, we just want you to make sure that the options are exhausted.
Right, I don't have a problem with it either. Do you, do you understand that, what we're saying, exhausting that option just...
I think so, I, I do my best to contact people and see if they would consider it.
'Cause I mean, obviously, I would, I would make the motion to approve it, but that makes progress.
Those trailers, I don't think they would even consider it.
But for us, like Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Dorsey said that...
But I will contact them and ask.
Because what'll happen, somebody else will come up wanting one where you did this, but you didn't do this, and we gotta do that by the same.
I understand what you're saying, sir.
But I have no problem with it if he can't give it.
Okay. You wanna rescind your motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll rescind my motion to, I guess, do I need to make another motion, take another action?
It fixed the problem.
Okay, I'm sure he would give me an easement.
So you're saying if he's granted an easement, he'd have to purchase the property? Yeah, if he got... That's what you're here for, right? If that easement was granted, then he could just go in and out the other way, kid. Yes. You can check where you, people you bought it from.
It could be an added experience, too.
It could be a bad...
Somebody's gotta pay for it to get the easement.
Yeah.
Clear it all, to make it usable, I guess, if it needs to be. He gotta drive with, he gotta drive across it, dude, right? If he's gonna access it from the other road?
Just remember, we, remember, we, we're not developers.
Okay. All right.
So you want me to amend my motion?
Yeah, you're gonna rescind your motion?
I'm gonna rescind my original motion and amend it or make a new motion that will make no, or take no action tonight until we exhaust all options of the, either the easement or the thirty-five.
I'm what I ask, I mean, in the end, they say no, they won't sell me. I mean, what's the big ask on there?
You just need to let us know. You need to let, uh, our administrator know, Terrell Partain, just call up here and, and let them know that you exhausted all options and, um... Well, you'll have to come back to us. Yeah, you're gonna have to come back next meeting, then we're gonna have to vote on it there. That will be the final vote.
All right. Mark, we just put it in a motion to go ahead and defend a, a contingent upon the sale of the land, if he's not gonna sell the land, that we go ahead and approve it, so he don't have to come back to the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. I make a motion, we approved the variance. Contingent on, he exhausted his options on purchasing the land, and the, and the landowner giving him a yes, affirmative yes or no on that.
Can you still say?
I second it.
I'm second it, second. Okay. All right, any discussion?
We're gonna go with that motion.
Okay. If, okay, if not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five oh vote.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here's another big question for tonight, thirteen B, Closure Section Ridge Road for Sower Installation, and if you'll look at your packet there, most of that is in the city limits of, from what is on Martin on Q Public.
Yeah, we just need to shut the road down.
Well, I talked to the contractor on it, and, uh, it's gonna be a nightmare if they don't shut it down. It could be life-threatening, the road just needs to be shut down, from, in my thoughts.
I think it should be shut down one lane at a time.
I don't think you can do that safely, you're looking at an eighteen-foot deep hole.
Twenty-six, I think they told me.
Told me eighteen.
Is there any way that they could one-lane it during, during working hours and then close it at, uh, at night?
And somebody runs off in it, and then he's liable.
Right.
They already got a situation that they're having to deal with now.
They did it on Hodges Mill, did it on Hodges Mill Road, and there was three cars ended up in the ditch over there at night. I'm just looking at the public safety endeavor.
I just don't know that Muffin Road can handle all that traffic.
So what you gonna have to do, I think, is there at Nancy Drive, he's gonna start and then come down, and then he's gotta cross over to Nancy Drive. So if we start at Nancy Drive and block that off, and then send everything down Nancy Drive to, um, to Old Twenty-Nine, then they have to come in on Milford Road, obviously it'd have to be open for local traffic.
I thought they'd already, um, completed the work on Nancy Drive, and they just need to, uh, cut...
He's gotta tie it all in. He's gotta tie it all in. And the problem he's gonna have, if it's, if the weather's pretty is good, but if it starts raining, it's gonna fill that hole up with water, and it's, it couldn't take longer.
So are, are you gonna be able to access Nancy Drive?
You won't be.
No.
Come across the road, it's closing down the whole road. I understand, you'll have to move back to Savannah Street Extension whenever you get to that one. But that's what I'm saying initially, that's what I was saying, start at Nancy Drive, then once he gets down to that area, then you back up Savannah Street Extension.
Yeah.
It's gonna be aggravating, but in the public safety eye, I think it needs to be shut down. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely gonna be.
All we can do is pray for eight days of beautiful weather.
And he, he said it may not take eight days.
Yeah, but it may take...
It may take ten, depend on the weather.
I mean, how about a bridge?
He told me that...
And this is a different contractor, isn't it? Same guy building the bridge.
This guy, this guy get it done, I know him.
They, they're a rental company, and they can, they, they, they'll get it done if they can, I'll put it that way.
He told me he felt good the weather, he could do it possibly in six days, but you know, who's, who's say we're gonna get the weather?
Yeah. Thank God the government's not in charge of the weather.
No.
All right, uh, so...
I make, I make a motion that we authorize shutdown, close road.
Okay.
Start, you want to do it in two segments, Nancy Drive and back to Savannah Street?
Well, I thought they'd already done Nancy Drive, I lived in there, I drive by there every day, and they've had it.
Come on this side of the road by Nancy Drive again. They have been working over there, but they gotta come back on that side. Yes. Okay. All right. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner, uh, Ben, to close the road to...
On two segments.
To, to get the sewer done.
Tell, you gonna coordinate with, with Steve, and then make sure Sheriff's Office, everybody knows from Emergencies Services? Okay, I'll send it.
I got a second back from Mr. Dorsey. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Did you go for it?
Yeah, I voted for it.
Okay.
I'm just quicker than you are, Marsman.
Okay. All right. Budget year twenty twenty-three, auditor engagement authorization, this is where we're needing an agreement for Terrell not to sign to begin the process with first and twos for our audit process.
Some move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five oh vote. Okay, uh, credits for experience of Road Department, you got that in your packet there, Shannon Tard, the guy that's been involved with equipment for some number of years now?
Fourteen, two of which were supervisor.
Yep. We got a motion to approve the credit for experience?
I make a motion for credit for experience.
I got a question for Terrell.
Okay. For Terrell, uh, Commissioner Dorsey's got a question.
Is, is this, I know typically we've capped some of these off at ten years, I just wanna know what the recommendation was, if that was considered.
Eight years. Say.
All right, and you got, I understand, but then the fact that he was a supervisor, too, I mean, if it's, if that's what he's good with, I'm good with it. And the reason I ask that is the fourteen years and then two years of experience as a supervisor.
Right. All right.
You got a second yet?
No, I haven't got a second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Tate has made a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five oh vote. Okay, now we come to the course of the meeting where it's a public comment, and as a reminder, this is a portion of our, uh, meeting where we allow the public to come speak on whatever they may choose to speak on, other than making public remarks about an individual commissioner or taking, uh, shots at a commissioner or whatever, but as long as it's got to do with county government, we welcome, we welcome you to, uh, public comment. So is there anyone here tonight? Okay, Ms. Ackerman, if you would take the stand, please. And first, let me kinda set a basis for this before you get started. I want the, the general public, the taxpayers here in Hart County to know that we have I want the, the general public, the taxpayers here in Hart County to know that we have an election board. And the election board is in charge of making decisions on how this county votes, where this county votes, the precincts. They make all of these decisions, uh, for our governing body. We have no participation in that. And, uh, and I know that there's, I read through the material there and it says that, you know, we can use paper ballots. But then when I get to the law, it says, it says that the, uh, it must be impractical or impossible. So we as commissioners don't make those decisions. That is based on the Board of Elections. So with that being said, you're welcome to speak on what you would like to speak on.
I really do appreciate that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, gentlemen, for all that you do for our county. We really appreciate you. My name is Sue Ackerman and I am the Treasurer of Hart County Republican Party. I've been a resident of Hart County for forty years, since nineteen eighty-three. And my husband and I raised our two children here in Hart County, in the Hart County Schools, where I also taught for fourteen years. My topic tonight is election integrity. I became involved in politics after I saw irregularities that were reported with the November twenty twenty election. Since then, I have been familiarizing myself with many issues concerning the voting process. I have been a poll watcher for the past two years. And before I get too far into my topic, I would like to assure you and the Hart County voters that, in my opinion, after my observations, um, I believe our election coordinator, Ms. Robin Webb, and our chairman of the Board of Elections, Gary Hamilton, both do an excellent job of making sure that every legal vote is counted correctly to the best of their abilities, using the equipment they have been given by the state. Having said that, I still believe that our county and our state would be better served by a different method of voting other than the Dominion voting system, which has created much controversy. According to Ballotpedia, in the twenty twenty election, Georgia was one of only four states who used ballot marking devices exclusively. All the rest except one used hand-marked paper ballots. I am one of thousands of Georgia voters, including many here in our county, who no longer trust voting on the Dominion voting system because it is inaccurate, unsecure, illegal, unverifiable to the voter, and, and also an unnecessary financial burden on the counties. I have four points to make. Number one, our voting system is unverifiable to voters because it accumulates their votes from a QR code that they cannot read. Number two, a U.S. District Court found our voting system's unverifiability violates two Georgia laws. I think, I think Tim may have those in his part of the presentation. Number three, the system never produced accurate results for Coffee County in twenty twenty, and it declared the wrong winners in the twenty twenty-two DeKalb District Two Commission race. Number four, the recently unsealed Haldeman Security Analysis found the system was not designed, engineered, or tested properly for election security, and it cannot be retrofitted for security. And Tim Roberts is going to share a little bit more about that. You want to come on up? And I have a copy here of that Haldeman report. If any of you would like to read it or see it, it's, it's long, it's ninety-five pages.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Timothy Roberts. I'm the new chairman of Hart County Republican Party. Happy to be here tonight to speak to you guys. First and foremost, there's been a loss of trust by voters in our system. Voters on all sides of the political spectrum have been raising concerns about electronic voting since its inception in the early two thousands. Today, I want to share with you bona fide issues with election accuracy in Georgia. As our elected representatives here of Hart County, it's your duty to provide for secure and transparent elections. Machine inaccuracies were discovered in Coffee County in twenty twenty. When ballots were recounted, the system produced thirty-nine new votes with no change in the number of paper ballots scanned. The voting system also failed to count one hundred and eighty-five ballots twice, leading Coffee County to write a letter to the Secretary of State stating that they would not certify or could not certify. And that was in Still versus Raffensperger, so it ended up being a, you know, legal case. The election superintendent then asked for outside help in verifying the accuracy and as a result was indicted alongside Trump recently. Over in DeKalb County, the twenty twenty-two primary, the machines awarded the wrong candidate as the winner. In Michelle Longspear's District Two Commissioner race, the machines had no votes in her precinct. However, she knew that she and her husband had both voted for her in that race. And there was, and so she reported that problem. When DeKalb County elections tried to run a machine recount, it failed. A hand recount revealed that there were errors in programming the touchscreens, but more importantly, one thousand eight hundred and five ballots were scanned but not counted. In the Haldeman Report, which was a, is a ninety-six page report that was submitted in, in the Curling versus Raffensperger in July of twenty-one, this was kept secret until just a few months ago, in which Professor Haldeman concluded that the Georgia election system is completely susceptible to hacking, even by people with modest skill. Haldeman is professor of computer science and engineering at the University of Michigan and a renowned expert in election system vulnerabilities. In regards to the QR codes, Professor Haldeman confirmed that Dominion scanners only read the data in the QR code and ignore the written text. He says, quote, "Voters have no practical way to read the QR codes so they cannot verify the representation of their vote or that it is counted." The much quoted MITRE report that Secretary of State Raffensperger clings to says that Haldeman was just a researcher and his report was faulty. What they don't tell you is that MITRE, the MITRE report was paid for by Dominion. They did not have access to any Dominion machines either. And the MITRE report was not signed. As a follow-up to the MITRE report, twenty-nine national experts in cybersecurity from Harvard, Yale, and MIT demanded that the MITRE, that MITRE retract their report due to gross oversights and flaws in the Dominion paid-for report. They stated that the MITRE analysis isn't simply wrong, it is dangerous. Their findings were confirmed by CISA, which issued a security advisory about the vulnerabilities in June of twenty twenty-two, and Raffensperger has done nothing. In fact, it's going to be after the twenty-four election, he says, before they're going to fix those patches. So, so what does Dominion say about Dominion? In a deposition from Dominion versus Fox News, Dominion's Director of Product Strategy and Security, Eric Coomer, wrote that, quote, "Our crap is just riddled with bugs," end quote. "We want hand-marked, security-grade, paper ballots, hand-counted at the precinct." There are some lawyers throughout the state who will say that Code twenty-one dash three, sorry, twenty-one dash two dash three hundred says all counties must use the same system. But if you do dig further in the law, there are exceptions that provide for situations when things don't work as planned, like in Coffee and DeKalb Counties examples. So what does the law say? So that's what it kind of comes down to. In Georgia Code twenty-one dash two dash three three four, "If election for any candidate or office or a voting in which the use of voting machines is not possible or practicable, if for any other reason, the superintendent may arrange to have the voting for such candidates or offices or for such questions conducted by paper ballots." Some may argue that keeping the machines is less risky. They'll say, just go with the flow. Not true. Security-grade paper ballots will be less risky moving forward. And most of the country goes by paper ballots, as we mentioned. Finally, the weak excuse of we can't do anything because we could get fined by the Secretary of State, like Athens Clark County, doesn't hold water. In Pearson versus Kemp, the Secretary of State argued that he has no authority over county election officials. He has no authority to find any county. It is not in Georgia law. So the conclusion here tonight, gentlemen, is Georgia's system is not accurate and it is hackable. The remedy for the voters of Georgia and for Hart County is security-grade paper ballots, hand-counted at the precinct, including absentee on the day of election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi. Hi, thank you. Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
First time doing this. Hi, my name's Brandon, Brandon Huff. And, uh, yeah, I thank you for that lead ten, Sue, wonderful people, really like them. Okay, so to add to what, to what my, uh, my colleagues have already been talking about, this is what I have to say. So I am here to join thousands of Georgians, including many in our county, calling for the county to immediately install a verifiable, secure, accurate, cost-effective, and legal voting system. Experts agree that hand-marked paper ballots, hand-counted in public at the precincts and voting centers is the only safe, secure, and viable alternative. I want to make you aware that there are at least two hand-counting methods that are available for demonstration. We can arrange for them to come here to hold a mock election with hand-counted results for the board to experience. One method has shown that one four-person team can count a hundred ballots per hour in an election of twelve to fifteen races. A precinct of a thousand ballots can produce hand-counted results in three hours with only three teams counting. To count faster, just add another team. When you compare that to Maricopa County, Arizona, in twenty twenty-two, where it took three weeks to produce, produce results due to mismanagement and problems with the machines and the results are still in question even to this day. Public hand-counting can be extremely simple, safe, secure, and efficient. And in addition, it will result in a major net savings to the county from the costs necessary to license, maintain, certify, test, store, and operate the current electronic voting system. The key, the current QR-coded voting system is unverifiable to the voter, was declared illegal by a U.S. District Court, is deemed unsecure by thirty technology experts, and it produced inaccurate results all three times it counted in the twenty twenty-two Coffee County election. And it even declared the wrong winners in the twenty twenty-two DeKalb County primary. We must immediately move to secure the twenty twenty-four election and regain trust from Georgia voters. Please act now. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Information is available, is there any? You got another?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Guy Hagan. I know some of you fairly well from, uh, having been the prior chairman of the Republican Party a few years ago. I'm not representing the Republican Party tonight. Just a little bit of background, I've been a Hart County resident about twenty years. I'm hoping to speak for the voice of the independent voter. And there are four approved, um, voting entities in the state of Georgia, Democrat, Republican, Constitution, and Libertarian. I've been poll watching for the Constitution Party, essentially, for the last two years. I've poll watched in all facets of the election, including the logic and accuracy test, the recounts, hand-counted recounts, election night. So I've made a serious attempt to educate myself, essentially, since twenty eighteen in all aspects of the voting process and the voting machines. So that's a little bit about my background. And, uh, I wanted to share, and I apologize for not having handouts, my printer broke. But I'd like to, uh, kind of show this, this summary. I'm not going to take credit for it. This was developed by another concerned citizen in another county, essentially trying to summarize everything that you've heard about Georgia election laws and the issues. And I'd like to just kind of read from that. It's, this is put together by a nuclear engineer in one of the South Georgia counties, just another concerned citizen. He presented this to his Board of Elections. So I think it's a great summary. You don't have to dig through all these various election laws, point, counterpoint. But essentially, it summarized the QR code. And it's really not a QR code if you dig through the Dominion contract and technical literature. It's actually referred to as a two-D barcode. If it were a QR code, standard QR code, then, you know, we would be able to have a QR code reader on a, on our cellphones or, you know, a standard QR code reader. But what that means is that, you know, the, as was stated earlier, that, you know, the person that votes using the ballot marking device, you know, their ballot cannot, is not verifiable. They're told when they bring the ballot to the, to the scanner, please review your ballot. Well, that's great. You, you see what the, uh, printer printed out for your choices, but that's not what's counted. It's based on this proprietary two-D code. That's what goes into the system. So that's a technical issue and that's been subject to, uh, multiple lawsuits, including access to the ballots, you know, the actual paper ballots, and the, and the scanned images, to be able to compare one versus the other from a, from a audit perspective. And, you know, that was, uh, has been blocked by the Secretary of State and Attorney General, multiple different reasons. But the lawsuit that was settled, went all the way to the Supreme Court, was settled December twenty-second, that voters, ordinary people like you and I, have standing to bring these issues forth and seek remedy. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to try to maybe, uh, represent the people that are not represented by the, you know, the two major parties. Those are the only, uh, representatives that are currently allowed by Georgia statute on an election board. You got, the, the top two parties get, get, get a party-nominated representative on the, the election board. So that's kind of another issue with the, with the current statutes. But I want to read from this nice little summary and point out that, uh, the QR code is unlawful. The statutes were cited by, uh, Tim and other folks earlier. Statute OCGA twenty-one two dash three hundred does not meet, uh, is essentially unlawful. OCG twenty-eight twenty-one two dash two is also unlawful. Why is that? It's because the electorate's vote is encoded. It's not in a format that's readable by the, by the person submitting their ballot. They can look at what's on paper, but that's not what goes into the system. So it doesn't meet the requirements of the law. So what does that mean? It means, essentially, the system has been unlawful from October of twenty twenty, which, that was the lawsuit that was, that was, uh, ruled that the ballot marking devices don't produce a suitable, verifiable result. At that time, it was too close to the November election and so no changes to remedies were implemented. The legislature and the Secretary of State have been sitting on that for three years now and have not addressed the issue, you know, from a, from a ballot that is verifiable by the ordinary citizen. So what's a potential lawful remedy? Well, it's, it's in the statute and it was quoted, but it's essentially an emergency paper ballot. And I think, you know, it's generally considered the same thing as a provisional ballot, but it, I think it's also classified as an emergency paper ballot. And if, if, uh, if that ballot was handed to a voter when they walk in to, you know, to the, to the election office and their election validity was, was verified by the poll pad and either had the option to request an emergency paper ballot versus voting at the BMD, then those emergency paper ballots would go into the scanner and be tabulated just like a, a BMD marking device. ballots would go into the scanner and be tabulated just like a, a BMD marking device. So there is a solution. And that's, you know, the voter clearly has voter intent, but because they marked it up with appropriate pen or pencil, whatever the, whatever the law requires, I think it's, it's actually specified for a particular type of pencil. And so I think that pretty well summarizes what I wanted to say, other than, you know, from an injury's perspective, let's look at the 14th Amendment. It says, "Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." Anybody who uses the ballot marking device is denied equal protection versus someone that has submitted an absentee paper ballot, which, you know, they have clearly marked their intent on an absentee ballot. When the ballot marking device ballot is printed, they have no way of knowing what actually went in the system. So that's my summary.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Guy.
I'd like to, so I don't have additional comments, but...
All right. Any, anyone else? If not, like I said in the beginning, the election board is responsible for how we vote and where we vote, and we get our direction from, from those folks. And I will say, I appreciate our election board, Gary Hammond, Dottie's here tonight, Ms. Gordon is the Democratic. And I'll say this, I believe that if there was anything that went on in these last elections, I don't believe it happened in Hart County. I believe that the election that we had here was done with the utmost respect and integrity in our county. We can't control other counties. We can't control the state. All we can do is be responsible for what's happening in our county. And I think that, and I really believe that our, our folks that work, from the poll watchers to the people that do the, sending out the district cards, I believe they all do their best to be honest and have integrity here in Hart County. Any other Commissioners have anything?
The only other thing that we, we have from a Board of Elections standpoint is we are required by law to fund them. And we also confirm the appointment of a Republican and a Democratic person or Democratic Party's representative. That's all we have to do with elections.
All right. All right, any other public comment?
I think we all have to pay to defend
Right.
a contest on any of those decisions that Athens Clark County contested. Mr. Roberts, let Chris, in his conversation with law, that resulted in a fine to Athens Clark County where the government's attorney speaks, which were minimal. Athens Clark County attorney's fees were over $40,000, and the penalty on that is $5,000 per day for non-compliance. And Athens Clark County get appealed that. So that's what we are struggling. That's the last decision from the State Board of Elections. It's not...
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I'd like to... I think there's misconception about what the Athens Clark County situation was. The issue there was they did not provide adequate spacing on the ballot marking devices. So it was a privacy issue, which is also in the statute. You know, it's not necessarily, you know, some of the other issues around potential integrity of the voting machine.
It wasn't about issues, though. It was about whether or not you can affect the ballots regardless of what.
No, no. It was strictly about segregation, spacing of the ballot marking.
There's a reason that they chose the impracticality under the statute
Well, they may have...
paper ballots. But it was because they were using paper ballots that they were fined, not because they weren't spacing appropriately.
Okay.
All right. Let's do that executive session.
We don't have an executive session. Okay. All we, the, the last part of this agenda we've got to get done is the adjournment. Let's see how fast we can do that. Does anybody make a motion?
Come on, Frank. Come on, Frank. Come on, Frank.
Commissioner Ben.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Commissioner Ben made a motion. Ben, Brandon, you make a second.
I'll make a second, yeah.
All right. All in favor? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.
Marshal Copy, Brandon.